Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, August 28, 2024. It is 6:01 PM, and I'd like to call to order the City of Columbus Regular City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to make the motion to adopt the agenda for tonight?
I move, I make the motion to adopt the agenda for the August 28, 2024 City Council Meeting with the change of B3 to the amended payment summary and Agenda Item C4 to the amended work meeting agenda.
This is Ron. I'll second that.
Any questions, anyone? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye. Our next item is the consent agenda. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in Items B1 through B3 on the August 28, 24 City Council Packet and Attachments. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Are there any questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Public open forum. Is there anyone online? I don't see anyone here in the chambers who would like to speak. Hearing none, we'll move on to the Columbus Lions Club Temporary Liquor License. And I'll make the motion to approve a temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for the Columbus Lions Club for the Fall Fest Event on September 21, 2024 at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota. Is there a second?
This is Ron. I'll second that.
Any questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Item or letter number three, Letter of Credit Release, Three Beacon Holdings Truck Line Project, and this is pages 13 through 19. Kevin, would you like to fill us in on that, please?
So this is a release of the letter of credit to Three Beacon Holdings. This is the project associated with Blaine Brothers, 150th Avenue, the public improvements associated with that. The developer represented by Dean Dally has made a request to release all of the letter of credit. However, at this time, we're still in that one-year period where we hold 20% of the surety for a year. And looking back, we basically accepted that project back on October 18. So at this time, I'm only recommending a release of 80% of the letter of credit, which is $600,000. And so, once we get to that year period, we could release the balance. And so I'm recommending a release of the letter of credit in the amount of $600,000.
Any questions, anyone?
Well, this is Sue. I just have, I understand the reason for the 80%, but is, does Mr. Dally understand that? Do we communicate that to him if he's requesting the full amount?
Well, that's part of the, I haven't communicated that with him directly, but that's part of the developer's agreement, is that we hold 20% for up to a year or so.
So it's in there, okay.
Yeah.
As long as he's aware, that's all I.
Sue, I've been in communication with Dean, and he understands that.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you.
So I'll make the motion to approve the letter of credit release for Three Beacons Holdings in the amount of $600,000 as recommended and presented in the attached August 2024 memorandum by the city engineer. Is there a second?
This is Janet, aye, second.
Any questions, anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Number four, a work meeting agenda for September 3. And that's on page 20 of our packet. Jack, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Jessie. The City Council Workshop Meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 3, 2024 at 5:30 PM. The following item is recommended for the meeting agenda and discussion. The 2025 Budget Report and Discussion. Staff recommends that the City Council set the agenda for the item listed above or make additions or deletions to this list as appropriate. In your original packet, the ACEIT meeting was on this, but that's been deleted. That meeting will be held on September 4th at the Joint Planning Commission City Council Meeting.
Oh, so what we have listed here is not, that one's going to be moved to September 4th?
Yeah, that's the, do you have a, that was the amendment to the agenda, so that was being struck from that recommendation.
Any other questions, anyone? If not, I'll make the motion to approve the September 3, 2024 work meeting agenda as recommended. Is there a second?
Yep. This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. On to number five, Lions, Columbus Lions Club Raffle Sales, Resolution 2410, pages 21 through 25. I think we went through this already at our workshop. And so, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2410, a resolution authorizing the Columbus Lions to conduct a prize raffle at 1639 Kettle River Boulevard on September 21, 2021 for the Fall Fest Event. Is there a second?
This is Janet, aye, second.
Any questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Yep. Thanks for coming.
Number six, 2025 Budget Discussion, pages 26, and in closure.
Thank you, Jessie. Staff will review with council the following budget schedules for tonight's meeting. This includes the Park Land Fund, the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund, the Fire Hall Capital Fund, the General Capital Fund, and the Public Works Equipment Capital. Staff will be seeking directions from council regarding inputs, adjustments, and modifications to the proposed 2025 budget schedules.
Well, as I was looking through, I was trying to remember if we reviewed this before and had come, I couldn't remember what our, if we had made any suggested changes.
We did look at the one before. This was the, let me pull this one up first. It's this one, which is the Public Works Equipment Capital Improvement Fund. We've talked about some things in here. One of the things that we will do, we're going to run an analysis on the road grader. It does have a scheduled replacement in 2031, 2025. We will have a schedule for that. The only thing we're looking at here is really, this is just an outline beyond 2025. We're not looking to approve this tonight, but we're looking for any inputs to see if this is what we want to include. But what, when we vote on this, what will be included is what's in the 2025 year. But we will provide you with that analysis. It just wasn't ready for tonight's meeting. So what this does is show you those equipment purchases that will be phased out over the years, and the only ones that we're actually approving when this is done, when we do approve the final budget and the capital improvements plan, will be the 2025 years. The others are just what the schedule is. Those can be modified, adjusted, or moved out further, or even deleted from the schedule as we go on.
Which schedule are you showing up on the screen right now? Or is it this last page? Trying to figure out which page in the packet.
Last page of the packet, Sue.
Well, thank you.
It looks like you have somebody in the waiting room, Jack.
Okay. We got them. So regarding this schedule, the biggest topic we had for discussion, the last time we looked at this, was the motor grader purchase. The city purchased a motor grader in 2023 for a cost of $370,250. It is on a seven-year replacement buyback schedule with Caterpillar. We've talked to the Caterpillar people. They're working on giving us the details and the information on that buyback agreement. As soon as we get that, then we can provide you with that analysis, which could affect the way we look at this for the future purchase. Going forward in future budgets, though, we may, we want to revamp this replacement schedule and just put it into more tabular form, because going out more than five years is kind of a little bit risky business in trying to predict the future.
I think I disagree with that. I mean, lots of businesses project out way beyond 20, 20 years even. So you do the best job you can. You update it as, you know, as you get closer in. But I don't think, I don't think it's, just because it's hard to predict and there's more variability going forward, I don't think that's a reason to not do it.
I mean, it's not that we wouldn't do it. We'd just do it in a different manner. There'd still be an equipment replacement schedule out for at least 10 years, but it wouldn't be probably part of the conclusion this.
I'm sorry, it wouldn't be what?
It probably would not be included in like, in the spreadsheet form. So when we presented the budget, it probably only showed five years, but then there'd be a supplementary sheet showing what would go out beyond the five-year period. But we can take a look at that next year and determine if that's the way you want to do it.
Okay.
It won't be done this year.
And I know this is more of a housekeeping thing, but on the 2022, I thought we were going to add in the equipment sale on this schedule. That's still to be done.
I'll update that right now.
We can update that right now.
Okay.
There's a project or an equipment replacement. It's in the schedule for 2026, which is a track, tractor, stormwater pond mower. Before we go through with that, we'll do an inventory of what we have and actually make sure if this is something we need and get more information with that. But that'll be a consideration for the following year.
On that, on that topic, we've been kind of kicking this can down the road for a couple of years now. So do we have an estimated date when we might have a better sense of what ponds are our responsibility versus private landowners? Isn't that the question?
That is the question.
And, and, and are we ever going to have an answer?
We will, we will have an answer.
Okay. When?
We will have an answer for the 2026 budget.
Janet, this will be something we'll start on after, it's probably something that's going to be done in December, January, and February.
Trying to figure out how to come up with all that is a lot of, it's literally going to be somebody sitting in front of a paper file and going through developer agreements, trying to figure out who owns what and who's responsible for what.
Yeah.
It's just been kind of a timing thing at the moment, so nobody's necessarily had time. And I think it might be something that maybe Jack and I have to sit down and talk, and maybe we just task somebody with it. It may be me, it may be one of my guys, it could, it may be an office staff. We don't know who that is at this point, but I think it's going to take a little bit of, a little bit of time to try to power through that.
So I'm looking at Bill. I mean, in a community like ours where they, you know, it's wet everywhere and there are stormwater ponds everywhere, is there an easier way to figure that out? I mean, I can't, I can imagine, having been part of treasure hunts here before for documents, you will never be done. So I just wonder whether or not a better approach would be to, you know, think about what makes sense and try to create a policy or something around that, but, or if there's any precedent anywhere else that, of cities that have been facing this. And, and part of the reason I ask is because, you know, I have two sitting on my property. I've paid to have them dredged out myself. There's a culvert that runs into the road that goes into my yard. One of the things you said is if there's a culvert, it should be the city's responsibility. It's probably due to be done again. And I'm not, I mean, I'm just a representative of probably, who knows how many are like that here, right? So I, I'm just, I'm just curious whether there's a better way to do it than to try to go back and look at developer's agreements.
One thing we could do, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, is, my recollection is that most of the agreements provide that the property owner's responsible. So our default position could and should be that the property owner is responsible unless, unless we find out otherwise. The only case where that's, you know, in the, in the rare instance where the pond serves more than one property, multiple properties, sometimes we've made that a public facility. I'm guessing that we haven't been that careful. But, so I think the default position without doing a lot of review is that that's the property owner's responsibility if it's in the four corners of their property and develop a program around that without having to check through all the documentation. Another approach would be to spot check, you know, to, to poll, you know, a half a dozen over, a half a dozen years or something, and just say, okay, in this spot check, we consistently found what we thought was the case, which the property owner is responsible. And then, then you have to develop a system of sending notice that it's, you know, it's time you clean your pond or whatever. And I don't know, you know, if we even have that in ordinance form. Certainly, it would be in the, in the development agreement, so you could argue that runs with the land anyway. So that would be a way to shortcut it, you know, just not, not have to look at every single property and, and put it on a map.
I mean, there must be hundreds of them. I mean, in my neighborhood alone, there's probably, I don't know, 25?
They, they are all over the place. There's no doubt about it.
And I, and I would, I would, at least, again, in my neighborhood, I think most of them do drain more than one property.
And we could have a simple, excuse me, we could have a simple ordinance that basically, from this point forward, you know, covers that responsibility as well, so you don't have to look to the developer's agreements. And I, I think that'd be something we could, you know, check with the league, pull up a model. And then, you know, just start, you know, modestly in the next 12 months, giving notices to the oldest ponds, you know, moving forward, the oldest neighborhoods, and just kind of roll it that way.
So are you, so I just want to understand this. And I get that word, this is just conversation, but if I have a pond on my property, I'm responsible, even though it was put in during a development? Or would it be, so I was the lucky one that drew the pond on my property and I'm stuck with potentially a $20,000 fix?
Well, again, that's where, if you, let's say you get the notice from the city, clean your pond.
Yep.
You would then be able to provide documentation. Well, no, this is a community pond. It's an HOA pond. I don't know if you're within an HOA, but, but that would then give the property owner the ability to say, well, it's not just serving my property, it's serving a development. And in that case, there's likely an HOA, or should be. And if, or if there's an easement that, that serves multiple properties. So, you know, that's where, that's where Jim's approach of investigating each and every property, well, then you'd have a, you'd have a better record. But that's a lot of work, and, you know, it's going to create a whole system of, you know, following up with property owners. Whereas I, I think if you had a generalized ordinance, if there's a, if there's a pond on your property, you need to clean it, you know, whatever the normal cycle would be. So if that's 15 years, 20 years, I'd look to the engineer on that, but. So I'm just trying to give you some, some shortcuts. I'm sure there's a little, I'm not sure, but I would guess there's some guidance on the league's kind of toolkit of things. If not, we could certainly help come up with something, a simple ordinance that makes this, that not just, it doesn't supersede the requirements of the development agreement, but it would kind of supplement the requirements of a development agreement, so that we wouldn't have to get into a tug-of-war with property owners who say, well, I don't have a development agreement. Well, the ordinance, you know, covers that.
So Jim and Kevin, so we get, you know, we get CUPPUDs for developments, you know, like, like the one that went in St. Clair Lakes and stuff. Those, I mean, the developer is required to drain the land, drain the water properly in that development. It's not kind of on a per parcel basis. It's over the entire development. So to me, it seems like if your home is in a development that was, you know, you didn't just buy a parcel of land and put up a house, and there was a pond or two you had to put in there because you built the house, that seems like that would be a really clear case where the pond is the responsibility of the landowner. But in a development, it seems to me like that's, you can't pin that on any one landowner because it's serving multiple properties.
So that's, so that was my thought too, right? So my thought was, you look at, somebody comes in and they build a development, the development has 20 homes in it, let's just use Prynor's Preserve, right?
Yeah.
Now, that, that one's private, but they do contract the city to do the maintenance on it, right? But nevertheless, that drains that whole development, and that was built as part of that development to drain everyone's property or the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, my thought was, you look at the, you know, each development, right? Every development around here has a name, right? St. Clair Lakes, Prynor's Preserve, whatever. You look at that, and those homes that were built in that development, in my head, would be responsible for that cost. How do you get there? Does the city drive that project and then they get assessed for it? I have no idea what that answer would be, but I'm more on your wavelength that it would be a whole development. Because I have a pond on my property at home. There's a culvert that comes across the road from my neighbor's house. I happen to be on the lower end. Everybody's property drains towards mine and then drains into a pond in my yard.
Yep.
So, I mean, hypothetically, it's draining eight or 10 homes at this point. So, you know what I mean? So that's my, that was my thought anyways. If, if we're wrong on that, then.
No, you're not wrong. I think, you know, usually we would look at the, either the development agreement, the HOA documents, the easement that established the pond in the first place, and it should say something about maintenance, and it should say who's responsible for maintenance. I was trying to come up with a shortcut.
Yeah.
Yes.
That, that allows us to assign that responsibility generally to a property owner, but that's usually where there's one pond serving one property, a commercial property owner, for instance. You know, obviously, if you're part of a development, then everybody in the development benefits. We have a system of ponds, then it, then that responsibility belongs to everybody within the development.
It's hard, it's hard, though, in a situation where there's no HOA. I don't know how you, I don't know how you do that.
You would, most of the time, and I have to look at some of the documents, most of the time, that becomes a responsibility of the successor to the developer, which is everybody in the development. And it allows the city to come in and assess that cost.
So it's kind of like a road project? You'd handle like a road project?
Yep.
So the city would do the maintenance like we do in Prynor's Preserve and then assess, in Prynor's Preserve, it's the HOA. But in the case of a development, then we would assess each individual property an appropriate amount.
Yeah, and I think you would, over time, you'd have a rolling program based on the age of the development. Oldest first, of course, where you'd send out notice to the property owners, it's time to, to clean your ponds. Here's, here's a list of, you know, services that do that. If it's not done within the next 12 months, we're going to come in and do it, and we'll assess you. And, and, you know, that gives the property owners the choice of going out into the private market or waiting for the city to come do it.
But I would only do that if it was a private pond. If it was a situation that we're talking about, I think we have to come up with, kind of like you would for a road project.
Yeah, I mean, you would, you would almost probably have to have a neighborhood meeting, call, call that whole development in. Maybe some show, maybe some don't, but, you know, you try to cover as many people as you can and talk about what needs to happen. And I think, I think this needs to be, this is a bigger conversation, which is why we haven't really got into it yet, because it's kind of hard to wrap your head around and...
Well, and, and I'm bringing it up because I've brought it up for the last few years, but this year in particular, it's been super wet. And if, you know, my pond is overflowed and my backyard is, been pretty much underwater for most of the summer, and, you know, you get another couple summers or years like that, and people are going to start having problems with water in their house.
Oh, no. I agree wholeheartedly.
So I just, and I'm not saying it because I'm worried about my house because I'm up pretty high, I mean, but it's going to be a problem, so.
Yeah, we've had some conversations. Elizabeth and I had conversations with about it, just trying to wrap our head around how to figure out, I mean, we know where the information's at, but now, I mean, we're going to be flipping through paper to try to get there.
Yeah.
And, and figure it out. And it's just, it's a, it's a pretty big animal in that sense. I mean, we're trying to cover 48 square miles. I get there's a portion of it that's, you know, DNR and, you know, that goes away, but a fair amount of developments in town that we got to try to work through, so.
A lot of the information can be easily found on the plats. That would be the first starting point, is to pull a plat of a subdivision. If it's not in a subdivision, there's probably not going to be any type of potentially public or private ponds, unless they're required by Rice Creek. In that case, they would probably always be private, so that would be a good starting point. But like we say, this is part of a larger conversation and a bigger problem, but I think we need to start somewhere, and somewhere is getting that inventory developed.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it drives, it drives the need for equipment, and that was my purpose for bringing it up.
Right. And, and maybe we start by identifying where all the ponds are and how many we have, mapping those out, and then try to figure out, then try to break those out into developments and then, you know, name them. So it's right, I mean, you just got to try to power through it rather than dig through every, I, I don't know how our files are here. I know there's property files, but I don't know if there's development files either. I, I have no idea how our system works, so.
I've got a question. Why, why is this an issue now? I mean, how many years has Columbus been around? Have you ever cleaned out one of these ponds?
No. I, so, so the, but I do deal with water every year, right? So this year is obviously another exceptional year, right? Where I get calls for water all the time. So, you know, when a development's new, nobody calls for water because everything drains the way that it's supposed to drain. But as time goes, you know, everybody has nice yards around here, and you have this nice little pond on the side of your property. I mean, you drive through some developments, and that's where everybody's yard waste goes. So now the pond loses capacity and it doesn't, doesn't drain the way that it's supposed to, and then it starts backing up. Or, you know, somebody puts in a driveway with no culvert, or, you know, I mean, there's all sorts of, all sorts of things that happen. I mean, Columbus is flat. You have 10 gophers that dig in a ditch, and now all of a sudden I'm backing up water. So I mean, there's all sorts of, you know, goofy little nuances that can happen, and it's a problem that we've known about, but just is such a big animal, and really, to be quite honest with you, not enough manpower to go after it in identifying or doing the work.
I just wondered if they changed the law or some state law.
No.
Because I know that Forest Lake does a lot of them.
They do, because Forest Lake is... They do, because Forest Lake is an MS4 community, we are not.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know that, yeah, I don't know if we ever will be or not, I don't, I think that's population-driven.
5,000.
5,000? So, I mean, there's some nuances for us to grow to 5,000, and some for us to stay under 5,000, so, you know, it's just, it's kind of one of those things. I've talked in years past about, you know, stormwater assessment fees, or, you know, different things, because, you know, we got to do ditch cleaning and culvert work, and, you know, pond maintenance, and all of those things that, to be quite honest with you, is very expensive, and we don't budget for that here, so, you know, if we run into something like that, we're trying to, you know, pull money from something else, and we've added money in budgets, so I have a decent culvert budget, so I can do work that way, or use that money to try to remedy issues and things. So, we've been okay, but, you know, we're not doing that type of maintenance that other communities are doing that, that are required to do.
Well, another way, and here again, we're probably getting a little off-topic, is to form stormwater utility districts, which is a means to do assessments, especially for things coming in and maintenance of future projects. But I really think the inventory would be very valuable to have, and it's the first step in going in any direction.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to open Pandora's box, I just...
It always, I mean, that always happens, you know, somebody talks about something, you see something, and it spurs a conversation that you didn't plan on having, but they're always good to have, right?
So I'm writing down, we'll start to work on this in December.
Okay, you got it. I've got it written down here.
All right. So is there anything else on this schedule that changed from the last time we saw it? I didn't bring my old version, so...
No.
Okay.
So Jim, that vent track there, we don't have anything to do.
So, we have a skid steer, and we have a brush mower on it, but that's not something that I can take into Prynor's Preserve and mow, because the houses are right there, and, you know, the mower that we have, it throws a lot of material out, it's a brush mower, right? So, my fear would be that we would be in there, you know, trying to be as careful as possible, but, you know, a branch goes and sticks into somebody's siding, or breaks a window, or, you know what I mean? It's not necessarily the right piece of equipment for that. So, you know, we have to be really cautious when we're in there doing work, and it's, you know, there are different pieces of equipment that you can use, so different types of heads, or different mowers, or, you know, things like that, so...
Yeah, I thought when you were cleaning out stormwater, I thought you were using backhoes.
If you, so, so you have the stormwater ponds-
Yeah.
-but you also have the drainage ditches that get to them, so, all of that stuff, and then, you know, also, you got the maintenance areas to get to those, so there's more than just the pond. So, you know, there's catch bases that you need to identify, you need to check culverts, make sure they're clean, free of debris, I mean, there's a whole list of things that you need to do, and it takes a little bit of time. So, you know, you send a guy out there to mow, potentially he's mowing for a couple of days, and then, you know, when you're done with that, then you're out there looking at the, you know, the drainage ways, the ditch lines, and the culverts, and the basins to make sure that, you know, they're not cracked, or they're leaking, or, you know, full of debris, or, you know, have animal nests in them, or whatever. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things to do, and I have, I have a list of, a checklist that says, "Hey, we're doing this, 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 and this." And it, to be honest with you, it follows that MS4 policy, we're just not required to do all the reporting. So I figured, I'm going to come up with a plan, and that's what I'm going to use, and if someday we are required to do MS4, then I already have the paperwork, that's how we're maintaining it, so...
Thank you.
Janet, that number has been added under the 2022 column for that resale, it's actually in these notes at the bottom of the page, we just hadn't entered it into the column.
I just assumed if you add it in the column, then it's going to increase the carry-forward.
Yes.
Just by formula, so that's, that's why I wanted to see it there.
The only other item, and I will mention this too, in some discussions that we've had, is moving forward, is how much we levy each year for our transfer, for equipment replacement funding. We want to make sure we have a budget, that's why we would go out and project this out beyond five years, but that's something we'll take a closer look at too, to make sure that it's not over-levered, but it's not under-levered either. Does anybody else have any more questions on this?
Is the, is the first page of this in response to a question of what the carry-forward balance is? I mean, this isn't, this isn't a budget, right? Or is this...
No, this is part of the capital improvement plan.
For the park assets? I'm looking at the first page.
So you're looking at the park land fund?
Well, I don't know, did, what order did you want to go through this? I mean, I'll do it however you want.
So you're looking at Schedule D?
Yes, sir, yes.
This is part of the capital improvement plan. The only thing that relates to the budget on these things will be transfers. In this budget, their funding source is park dedication fees. So if you look at beginning balance, two items now, and that says park dedications, so this one shows no funding for the upcoming years, generally because it's too variable to guesstimate. We talked earlier, when there was some hope about reviving the apartment complex, should that have gone through, we've collected over $100,000 in park dedication fees, so that's one we have to examine each year on a yearly basis to see if any of those projects going forward can be funded through this account.
So, so the current fund balance is $105,938, is that right?
Correct.
And they don't, and they don't anticipate spending any money in 2025?
Correct.
Okay.
Does anybody have any more questions on Schedule D, Park Land Fund? The next is Schedule FE, which is the Fire Equipment Capital Fund. That's one that we got, these numbers came from the Forest Lake Fire Department, they provided us with the information on this. Jesse and I met with them in March, Jesse and I and Ron met with them in March, and then Jesse, Rob, and I met with them in July. This is when we got this latest schedule, so that's what they're projecting to be spending going forward. The big-ticket item in there comes out though in 2031, that's when they proposed to buy a ladder truck, for what they're estimating now is at $3 million, so our share would be 600,000 of that. You know, if you look at what we're levying going up to 2030, it looks like it's excessive, but if they do purchase that ladder truck, it's going to be quite a hit on what we have in that account, but that would be more than enough to cover it.
Is this the, is this the budget that they were earlier talking about, having that robot that would put out EV fires?
It is, but it's not included in this, that would come out of a special state grant fund-
Okay.
-so we wouldn't have to pay for any of that.
All right.
Jack, what was the total cost for the new ladder truck?
$3 million, that's what they projected.
And our portion is 600?
600,000, correct.
So, why is the 600,000 across from other, rather than at the bottom where it says ladder truck?
That's where it should be, Janet, at the bottom where it says ladder truck, it's just been misplaced.
Okay. This is an easy one.
I took that page for easy.
Are there any other questions on this fund?
No questions, just sticker shock. But didn't he say they paid 800,000 when they bought it 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, or whatever?
Yeah, that's correct.
Ay, 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 ay. Of course, if you're on the top floor and there's a fire, you're glad they have a ladder, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
If there are no more questions on this one, we can always come back to it if you'd like, or if you have any questions you're looking for, you're looking to it in your spare time, give us a call, we'll be glad to answer or talk to you anytime. Moving to Schedule F, which is the Fire Hall Capital Fund. This is the fund where we paid the roof replacement cost from, which we did earlier this year, which was $70,000. And there are no projected projects here going forward in this. These are probably going to be for things that come up. One of the things that I can see that could happen, if you had to replace a garage door there, that would be a very expensive project. Other than that, I don't see a whole lot of things that could possibly go wrong, but you never know what can happen, but garage doors are always a possibility. That building's how old, Jim?
Say it again.
How old is the building?
1998.
1998, so, that's one thing that I could foresee could happen, may not happen, but it could happen in the future, that we'd have to be prepared to pay some substantial money to get that replaced or repaired.
So I have a question, maybe I'm just not reading this correctly. So, if you look at proposed budget 2027, the ending balance is $95,672. In 2028, we levy $18,250. There is no expenses, and the ending balance is $79,500. So how come we went down when there's no expenses and we've added 18,250 to the pot?
That's a good catch. When we went through this thing, we found several errors in some of the formulas, this is one that we missed in.
Well, I think, and I think there's a couple of other that look the same way, you know, in 2028, then you add another 20, you know, 18, 9, and the numbers don't change between 28 and 29. So, there's a formula problem somewhere.
Yeah, we'll get that rectified, so it'll all carry out consecutively. The only other comment on this too, even though, and there may be some slight changes in this, but at the end of that period with what we're transferring, we would still, we would have about $120,000 in that fund, and we currently had 104 starting out this year, so there shouldn't be, I think that's probably a pretty good allocation to keep us in an area where we need to be to try to cover any unanticipated costs. With that, if we want to move on, if there's no more questions, to Schedule G, which is the General Fund Capital. That relates to several items revolving things we need to do for maybe IT systems, security systems, city hall, future repair, generator. The biggest change in that one was, there was a category called New City Hall, which was put out for about 2030, which had a $2 million price tag in it. We've changed that to potential city hall repair. The only, the thing we need to do is, in my opinion, is to get some type of an inspection of this building to check for any structural issues, and maybe some issues in terms of maybe providing a few more things, possibly in the future with maybe an extra office space in here, or a conference room. So, the big thing in there would be to get some type of certified building inspector or a structural person to come in and look, especially at some of the roof trusses, posts, supporting this building, and make sure that we're structurally okay, and then come up with something if we need to do repairs, and we can do that in the future, so... The other thing that maybe we want to look at is the generator for this building. If we do ever have a major catastrophe in Columbus, this is probably going to be command headquarters, and having power in those situations is essential. A generator or something like a fire truck, you only need it when it's an absolute emergency. But when you need it, you got to have it, so that's something we might want to consider.
When we met last time on this, I thought that the new fiber line, 15,000, I thought that was not needed anymore.
I talked with Phil, and Phil said he was almost certain that it wasn't. I would say that we leave that, or just push that out in there, just in case there's an issue, but we can move that out into 2026, so that wouldn't be part of next year's budget.
Well, but if we, I thought Rob had actually looked up kind of like what the lifespan of fiber was, and it was like way out there. Again, I'm just, I'm opposed to putting money in the budget if we really aren't, don't, I mean, if there's not some anticipation that we need it, because then we levy for it, and then we sit on it.
We can, we can remove it, or we can push it out, it doesn't really matter, because we do have some fairly good certainties that there's no issues in the fiber line.
I'd take it out.
Jack, what's that parking lot paving, city hall finish in 2026?
That would be something if we wanted to consider repaving, finishing the parking lot out here, and that's just something, it's just a number for your consideration, if you want to do it, if not, then we just take it out of there too.
I'm wondering if some of these things are better represented in a note section, rather than actually plugging them into the schedule, like, you know, kind of a note to yourself, or to a future council in 2025, readdress paving the parking lot, estimated at $150,000. And that way, no one, no one, because when you put it in a budget like, or in a schedule like this, it makes it look like, well, that's a done deal, we're going to do it, and we haven't actually decided we're going to do it.
So I have two questions about that. First of all, when you say we levy for it-
Mm-hmm.
-do we levy for this? I didn't think we did.
Well, you levy for-
The only thing- The only thing we would levy for is the transfer for 2025.
What line is that?
And that's under budget, under beginning balance, and that shows we've levied $115,000 for this category.
But isn't the amount that shows there, I mean, in anticipation of the expenses that follow? So, if the expenses are there, we're, I mean, we're not levying for things that are five years out, but for the next year, we're levying for them. And I'm saying if we're not going to do it, let's take it out.
And that's one thing that we could adjust the levy on to make sure it corresponds to what the scheduled improvements or approved improvements are.
And then, and the other one is more of a perception. So, you know, somebody looks at this and they see $150,000 for parking lot paving in 2026. When I see that in a budget like this, I assume, well, then they're going to do it. I mean, that's what they're going to do.
Oh, yeah, I get that and I, I didn't, I thought we weren't budgeting for it or not levying for it.
Correct.
So.
And that is, that is a very easy misconception to make with these capital improvement plans is you're thinking, well, this is going to be done in 2026, 2027, 2028. The only thing when we approve these, it's only for the upcoming year, subsequent years are just in there as potential projects and they're addressed in the year that they occur or projections occur.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It was similar to the other sheet we looked at, which had numbers in there, but we're not budgeting for them. They're just kind of on the horizon to.
That's, that's correct.
So, what's different on that one than this one?
Should be the same.
So, yeah, and you just said to take them out of the other ones. So, I was wondering why to take it out of that, but leave it in.
No, I'm saying take it out of this one too. So, so what I, what I remember Elizabeth would do is she'd talk about cash flowing something. So, she'd plug in these numbers and estimate sort of a levy and then, you know, look at the bottom number and say, when are we going to run out of money? Like, when do we have to start plugging more money in this? And I realize that we're only talking about levying for the following year and that you'd have to make adjustments based on, you know, what these things really cost and stuff. So, there's, there's sort of two things. If you're putting a big expense out there seven years from now, and she looked, she, and this is how she did it, you guys might do it differently, seven years from now and she sees that you're starting to go negative three years from now, she's going to up that levy so that she's not negative. And if that's something we're not certain we're going to do in seven years, I don't want to do that because we now know that we, we've got a good, you know, a pretty good pot of money that we're sitting on, probably because of that sort of methodology. So, I don't want to lose track of it though. So, I think that's where the note section is helpful, you know, so you add it in the note section so the next year you talk about it and you decide, are you going to do it or you're not going to do it and kick the can down the road again. But that way, you're not, you're not building it into the levy or catch, you know, looking at it from a cash flow standpoint and panicking because you're going to, you're going to go underwater in two years.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to have this discussion, and we'd talked about this briefly before, is especially in this one, some of these levy projections could potentially be reduced beginning for 2026, 2027, or 2028. So, going forward, because this one shows right now that there would be a balance of $461,000 in this with what we have on here projected.
So, my question would be then, what projects do you want to do with what's on here and what don't you want to do? Because in past conversations, we've always talked about going out to 2030 with, with information.
Mm-hmm.
So, now I'm hearing that we don't want to do that.
You didn't hear that from me.
I, I, that's just what I, that's what I think I'm hearing right now.
No.
Is if we want to take this stuff off, then we're not projecting out with things that we think are projects.
I'm, I'm, I am suggesting we take out the things that we've not decided we're going to do. And we've not decided we're going to do the parking lot, but if we decide tonight we are, leave it in there. That's not, I mean, that's not been, we've talked about it, but there hasn't been any sort of consensus that, yeah, we're going to do it, which is why you only did half of it a year or two ago, right?
Right. We did like 10% of it.
Okay, whatever.
But yeah, no, right.
Yeah.
So, so the, so the reason that it's on there and the reason that we've talked about doing this a couple of years now is we rent out the facility and it's not necessarily cohesive to have people roll in and out of here. In the wintertime is when the Lions Club uses it, right? So, you know, we try to maintain it as best we can. It's painful, the plow not being blacked up and portions of it being blacked up because you take last year, the ground wasn't frozen and we got a couple of snowfalls, but not many. And it's, it's hard to move that out of here in some cases. But what happens then is it'll freeze because you don't, you're trying to leave a little bit and then it gets icy. So, then you put some salt down or some sand down and then, you know what I mean? It's just not, it's not a great place to move people in and out of at that point. That was our thought process, thinking, you know, we don't want anybody to fall down and get hurt. So, you know, we're trying to come up with things to be as safe as possible. That was our initial conversation, I'm going to say maybe two years ago, and it's kind of been sitting out here.
Yeah, and I think we've.
We had some conversations.
Last year.
I agree.
Yeah, we had some conversations last year and I think four out of the five members want to repave the parking lot. But, so, I mean, it wasn't an official vote, but we decided to leave it in there. But if we don't have, if we're not levying for that in this budget, then why not leave it in?
So, I'm just suggesting we decide if we're going to do it or not. If we decide we're going to do it, leave it in. If we decide we're not going to do it, or we're going to kick it down the, you know, to 2027 or whenever, then we take it out because otherwise, otherwise we're putting money in the bank for something that's not, not certain that we're going to do it. That's all. I mean, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it.
So, if we took that out, if we took the 150,000 out for the parking lot, then our levy would go down? Is that correct?
We would just change the levy amount.
Right.
So, that would help reduce the levy amount on the total budget.
Right.
So, to figure the line across where it says budget, do you see those levy amounts for each year? They start consistent at 115, beginning in 2024 across the page. You could do a reduction in those.
Well, it would be zero or it would be.
So, so, so there's a couple of big ticket items like that, that I don't remember us for sure. I mean, I remember that we had the new City Hall out there in, where it was, 2031 or whatever. I, and I don't think it's a bad idea to put money aside because ultimately someday we're going to do it, but the amount of money is dependent on how many years out you think you're going to do it, right? And I think that what Jack was suggesting in terms of getting an assessment of the structural integrity of this building and stuff will help us figure that out, right? I mean, if they come back and say, you know, you're not going to win any designer awards, but this, this place is going to, you know, is pretty solid and you don't have any big structural problems, you could probably operate out of here for another 30 years, that might change your mind about when you want to build a new City Hall or change a future council's mind, whatever. So, I think that that's a really good plan because it'll give you solid information rather than us just kind of pulling stuff out of the air. And I, but I just, I think we've, you know, we've kind of just been passively going along with whatever the numbers have been here. And, and I just think a better process would be, let's just decide if we're going to do some of these things, if we're going to do it, take a vote. And if we say we're going to do it, then put it in there. And if we say we're not going to do it, then either put it in the note section to readdress at a later time or push it out, whatever the, the direction is. The $400,000 in the City Hall renovation, I mean, I think that's too much in the absence of information.
Well, and again, these are just projections. It could be 100,000, it could be more than that.
And this is more of a perception thing, Jack. I get that that's, you know, it's not going to affect our levy for this year, but again, somebody sees that, there's going to be two new council members that come on next year. We'll forget what we talked about today, next year when we're doing this, and somebody's going to think, well, that was already, that's, well, we're doing it, aren't we? I mean, what's, what, what's renovation? What's the $400,000 for? Because there's no notes here that, that tie to it. So, I just think we should be intentional. If it's in this budget, it's because we've decided we're going to do it. If it's not, if it's, if, if we're still thinking about it, I think it should be in a note section. That's my recommendation. And I'm okay in voting on any of these things tonight or whenever you want to vote on them. I just.
Well, for some of them, I think you need some more information before you vote on them. And I have no problem with taking this out of the.
I mean, I think you're, I think your recommendation to get a generator, yes, I think we should vote on that tonight. I think you should put it in the budget and we should do that because that makes a lot of sense to me. We don't have backup power here that will sustain us for any length of time. And that seems like a risky thing for a city to, you know, be banking that we're not going to have, you know, a situation where that could basically take us offline for days.
And if we're going to do that, then I think we should move that. The only thing that you're voting to approve, when you do vote to approve this, is what's under 2025. So, I would recommend if that's going to be something we want to consider a year early, we move it over to that column. The 400,000 under City Hall repair under 2027, we could put that under a note section. I have no problem with that because that's one thing we really do need more information on before you can come up with a more solid number.
And then remind me, is the $100,000 for wall mold, was that, I don't remember, I mean, I remember we talked about a problem with mold, but I don't remember the specifics. Is that a, is that a for sure thing?
I'll let Jim update you on that.
So, we built the Public Works Building. There were some issues with it. We ended up doing a League of Minnesota Cities Claim. They fixed the roof and they did some work to the walls, but the walls are not fixed, if that makes sense. They condensate and I've pulled a couple of panels off here and there to just check it because it's not that hard to do. And the, and the insulation in there is moldy, which is not necessarily a good thing. Now, the doors are open, there's good airflow in there. It hasn't been an issue at this point, like nobody's getting sick, but not saying that we shouldn't look at it and try to remedy that situation at some point. That's why it's on there.
So.
$100,000 is a wild guess, right?
So, is this, is this something where you bring in someone who's an expert in, and they come and assess it and then they say, here's what you need to do to fix this?
Say that one more time.
Is this a situation where you bring in an expert like you would for the, the structural integrity for this building? So, you bring somebody in who does mold abatement? They look at it, they say, well, here's what you need to do to get rid of it or to?
Yep.
And then you budget for that. So, is that, is that the plan? Is that what this $100,000 is for, is to bring somebody in to do that assessment for us?
That would be the assessment and just an estimated placeholder cost for the remediation.
So, would it make sense to have the assessment in 2025 cost and not put anything in there for remediation until, because I mean, that can be really, you could almost have to rebuild the damn building. So, I, I don't know. I wouldn't put anything in there for the remediation until you've got somebody to tell us how bad it is and what it is going to take to get rid of it. Or if it's not bad enough that you have to worry about it, I don't know.
Right.
Well, that would be, that would be a logical step.
I bet you could tell us how much a mold assessment costs, Jesse. Didn't you, I said, I bet you could tell us how much a mold assessment costs. You just went through it, didn't you?
I didn't do it, but Shelley's sister did and it was 350,000.
No, well, that was to get rid of it, but just to have somebody come in and test. You just did that.
30,000.
And that's just for a house his size. So, I don't know what it would cost in your, in your situation, but.
You know, so our building in the summertime, the doors are open all, all the time. So, it's not, not as much of a big deal. In the wintertime, we run the air exchanger. So, we're, we're moving air because we know that we have that trouble.
Mm-hmm.
And, and again, knock on wood, we have not had any issues, but we know that there's some there. So, it's, and, and potentially the walls are condensating. So, we, we know that we have an issue. We don't know what the fix is at the moment. We've just kind of talked about it for the last few years, like we need to do something again, but, but haven't, haven't tackled it yet.
Well, I think, I think you should get an assessment. I mean, it's, it could probably be an OSHA problem if you just know about it and you don't do anything about it. So, you should at least get it defined and then.
I agree.
Budget it from there.
I think it's kind of a dual project. The walls are condensating is that needs to be fixed.
Mm-hmm.
And then everything else is a remedy after that because you're going to ultimately need new insulation and, and that type of stuff too. So, it, you know, it's not necessarily a mold, mold remediation. I think it's more of a, we need to figure out the condensation problem. The mold is the secondary effect to it, which is, you know, a big problem. But, you know, if we just replace the insulation, that's not going to cure our problem. We're just going to end up doing it again. So.
So, is it two different people coming in? Someone to say, why is it, why is there condensation? And another one to come in and measure what mold is actually in the building so you know whether or not?
To me, if, if it was me, I would probably call somebody in to say, we need to figure out how to get rid of the moisture coming in and then we just replace the insulation after that. And so, I, I don't, I don't think we go after the mold. I think we go after the condensation problem. And then, you know, once you, when you're working on the condensation problem, I think the mold problem goes away. So, you're going to ultimately end up replacing the insulation that's in there with something different, potentially spray foam or something of that sort. And it, and it's, you know, then that problem goes away. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, once you have mold, you got spores going all over the place. And then if you have spores going all over the place, they might be going places where they're getting trapped in other insulation that's not wet. And, and then I don't know if that, that creates the problem. I don't know enough about this. I think it's worth asking the question. I mean, maybe you do it, do it in an order that makes sense, so attack the condensation problem first and then have somebody come in and measure what the mold levels are.
We could.
That's what I think we should budget for in 2025.
Okay, we will get some numbers and put in there.
What happens to the 35,000 that we budgeted in 2024 for the building's security system? Because we're not, we decided not to do that at this point.
We're going to relook at that. Again, if we do it, it would probably be something we wouldn't do till 2025, but I think it bears us to reexamine that. Security systems are becoming more and more necessary. What we're going to do, I have a contact that's going to give me a call and kind of give them a proposal and outline some things, which means we'd also get some other quotes. But this would kind of give a framework for determining what our basic needs are for camera systems. And I would also like to include something in there too for an alarm system too for doors and window openings. Sometimes I think those are the best deterrent. Cameras are something that are very reactive. Alarm system is more proactive.
Yeah, okay. But the dollars, if we don't do it this year, does that roll to next year?
We can.
So, then our.
Correct.
The budget number would be up 35,000.
Correct, correct.
But then are you going to put a dollar amount in 2025 then? Or are you just going to move it over?
Well, what we'll probably do is just move it over because we probably won't have an opportunity maybe to do it this year. So, we can just roll that over to 2025. I do want to get the proposal first and hopefully we can get something in there in about a week and get a better idea.
So, we could maybe still do it this year.
So, when we bring this back as a final, we'll know exactly where that number wants to go.
All right.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I do, Jack. So, so this mold thing is getting expensive. So, let's take that $150,000 for the parking lot and, and do what? Take half that and designate it toward the mold?
No.
I mean, the parking lot has been fine for 175 years.
Right, we just decided to take out the parking lot. We're taking that out, so.
But then.
But, and we're going to reduce the. But, and we're going to reduce the other one to an assessment fee for both the condensation, whatever, and mold.
So change the $100,000 to what?
Zero. Or the $150,000 taken out and the $100,000, I don't know.
Is whatever your estimate for an assessment is going to be.
Do an assessment. So it's looking way better.
Ten or twenty.
I have...
Both have to come back to us with that because I'm sure they'll have to call some people to find out for a building that size what it would cost.
But I think we should put it on the agenda of some meeting to look at what it would cost to do the parking lot and do a vote. I don't know if it needs to be this year because it wouldn't be in the budget for next year. But I know every... It just seemed like everybody was in favor of it. Most people were in favor of it. We didn't have a estimate, I don't think.
So just to make sure that everybody understands, and I don't want to make it sound like nobody does, but we put money away. So let me get my glasses on here. If we do all of those projects in 2025, our ending balance will be $456,000 in our capital fund, right, that we've already levied for. So this money is sitting in the bank. If next year you decided that you wanted to do the Blacktop project and it was $142,500, you have the money to do that. So this sheet is merely a schedule to say, this is what we would like to do. The only thing that we are going to do is what's in 2025. Everything after that is, we'll call it a wish list. We'll call it a project list. We'll call it whatever we want. Just because it's out there don't mean that we're going to do it. And there may be something that we add to it because something comes up. So, you know what I mean? So this is just, we're budgeting money to do things. The easy one for me is looking at the equipment fund. We have an equipment schedule, 10 years for trucks, 12 years for dump trucks. The equipment is in that 10 to 12-year range, maybe 15, depending on what it is. Or if we talk about buyback programs and we buy warranties, like we talked about with the grader and the loader, we're not tied into that, but those are at seven years. So we budget money, we levy money to cover those projects that we've talked about and that we schedule out. So that's why it's important to have these conversations so we know what to put in here to make sure that we're levying enough or not too much. Does that make sense?
Well, that makes sense, but that doesn't sound like what I just heard, that if that $150,000 in the parking lot is not affecting our levy for this year because it's out.
Correct. So this year, we're going to levy $115,000 for 2025. So if you look at that budget number on the top, that's the levy number. That's how much money we'll get levied to go into this fund.
Right. So why are we levying $115,000 when we're not going to spend $115,000? I mean, it's for the other projects in the future, but we're not... We don't know what they're going to be.
So here's how... So I have a little history on this, as well as we...
And I understand how we've done it in the past, and that's why we did it.
So the reason that this number is $115,000, it used to be, we'll call it $15,000. The Public Works Building was paid off, I believe, last year or the year before, one of the two. And we talked about, at the council level during budgeting, that we can either not levy that $100,000 anymore that we bonded for, or we could roll it into this for...
Future stuff.
Future City Hall is what we kind of talked about at that point. So...
And I do remember that conversation now. So...
That's why that number is as high as it is, is because that $100,000 from the Public Works Building came into this fund.
Okay.
But, you know, as what we learned this year for the first time is that we're sitting on a pretty good pile of cash.
Yep.
And more than what are, what is the recommended amount per the auditor. So what... And I think, you know, that's a good problem to have, right? But I don't want to continue the process of accumulating way more money than we intend to spend because it's coming out of taxpayers' pockets, and they'd much rather have it sit in their pocket than sit in ours.
I had no argument for me.
So even though what we're really levying for is what, you know, we're expecting in 2025, the other part of that is, again, at least in the past, it's projecting out these projects and how much are you going to need if you're going to pay it off in five years or you're going to, I'm sorry, do a big project in five years or seven years or three years or whatever. And then we would look at the bottom number to see when it is that we start looking like we're going to go underwater, and you adjust the levy accordingly.
Correct.
So I think you're right. What I thought we just agreed on is we take the things out of these future years that we haven't said for sure we're going to do. We put that in a note so we don't forget to talk about it the next time around. And then we look to see what that does. And if it... And maybe we don't do $115,000 this year. Maybe we do $75,000. Or maybe we decide we're not going to do any levy for this fund because we're going to use cash that we already have on hand. I'm not saying we should do any of those things. I'm just saying that's the conversation we will have.
Well, that is making more sense to me now. And I agree we should lower it because if we don't have it for sure planned. I mean, we should at most levy for what we plan to spend, which is, well, I guess that does come to about $115,000 for next year, which is the 45 plus... Oh, no, it's just 65.
Yep.
Then that's what we should levy.
It's not even 65 because we're taking the fiber line out.
Okay.
We decided that's probably not going to have to be replaced. So it would be the 45 for a generator, so $50,000.
And that $5,000 may need to go up a little bit, but that's pretty well in the ballpark.
So the other thought process in the... And I'm not trying to sway anybody in any way, shape, or form here. Having this capital plan, the intent is to levy some appropriate amount to cover your funds so your budget doesn't do this. So hypothetically, let's just say somebody just made the statement that maybe we don't levy anything this year because we don't have a project, right? So now your levy is going to drop $115,000, and then next year you say, shoot, we're going to do the parking lot, and now we only got 20 grand. So we're going to levy $150,000 so we can do it the next year.
Right. And that would be a normal...
Get rid of the peaks and valleys.
I understand, and that's why we were doing it until we found out what Janet just said, that we have some extra cash that's sitting there, and we're... There's no reason to not pull from that if something came up that we didn't have planned.
And then I think the important thing is to talk in more definite terms about these projects rather than how we talk about it now, like, well, I don't know, here's our wish list. And then it's like, well, let's put it down, you know? And it's like, no, we should really decide if we're going to, you know, have to do some major structural renovations in here, find out what it's going to cost, figure out what we're going to do.
Yeah, if we don't have the money, then plan for three years or whatever it is.
Well, so trust me, too. I want you to make a definite plan.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot of work to go through and figure out costs on all this stuff, just for information.
Well, and I also think that, you know, every two years, you potentially have new people sitting here, and a lot gets lost in translation. A lot gets lost from turnover, even with staff turnover. I mean, we're suffering through a lot of that right now in various different ways. And so I think we should be clear about what we plan to do and keep track of the stuff that's sort of a wish list somewhere else.
Is there... I get confused, and then I get back online, and then I get confused because we talk about this big pile of money, but there's no number. Is there a number?
We've seen a tentative number just this week.
There's... We currently have a cash balance of about $10,300,000. Of that, though, approximately $4 million is tied up for dedicated bond payments. Some of it is in excess of what we have to do, but we have to have those payments in the bank a year in advance. There's potential in that, though, to pay off some of our bonds when they become callable. The next bond that becomes callable is in 2027. We also have a set of funds that are highly restricted, which is the tourism tax money, which is $288,000. There's some deed money, which is about $110,000, which can only be used for setting up revolving loan funds. There's our enterprise funds, which are restricted to the operation of our water and sewer projects. And then there's those things like our park dedication fees and a couple of our other capital accounts. And those account for about, I believe, close to $2 million. So you take all that away from the $10,300,000, and we've got about $4.4 million, which is essentially our budget for the year, outside of any revenues from property taxes.
And I think it's more than that because I think a lot of those things that you just talked about with the bonds and stuff are higher than what... I mean, I think it'll be... I think it will be more than that. Maybe it'll be $5 or $6 million. But the recommendation is to have 50% of your annual budget in cash, and that would put us at more like $2.5 million that we should have.
Well, I remember the accountant or whatever making that number. But I... So it's really spread out. It isn't like, well, we got this sitting over here, $5 million. It's a little piece here, a little piece there, and it all adds up.
Correct. But there is some things that we can do. We've had, looked at a few preliminary things and had some discussions. One of the things that we called and checked on was, okay, we have some of this excess money in these bond accounts. Can we use that to pay off a bond? There's one bond that we have, I can't remember what the name of it is, but it was like $1.4 million. That's the one we checked on. But we can't pay anything off on it until 2027. So we'll be giving you some more options on how to use some of that fund. But getting back to this general capital budget worksheet, one thing we can do is look at adjusting that levy because, as you can see, beyond 2027 on this schedule, and this schedule is just put on here as kind of a placeholder, we show no projects. I think one of the big things is going to be determined, what we find out, if there's any costs that we're going to have to put into this building, or what the cost may be for the Public Works issue about condensation and mold. And I think there is room to start looking at some of those other funds to see if they can be applied to other sources or even to reduce down the levy.
So that we're clear when we see the next iteration of this. We're going to take out the 150. We're going to take out the 100. I'm looking in 2026 right now. We're going to take out the 400, and we'll put those in the notes section. And do I have that right?
Yep. And take out the...
Say it one more time, Janet. Yep. The 150, I'm looking under the 2026. So the 150, that's going to go out. The 100 is going to go out, and in the 2027, the 400 is going to go out. Okay. I think the $10,000, that's in 2027 for, is that for the copier, printer? That makes sense.
Yeah.
The 25 in the computer back, is that the computer backup system? It's hard to see. Nope. City Hall renovation. I don't know. I mean, that's probably a fine number to start with, if that's what, you know, we know that there's going to be some things we're going to have to do here. So I would be happy with that. And then carry that philosophy through all of these schedules, all these capital fund schedules. And then as we, you know, as things come up, let's just make up our mind, yes, we're going to do it, no, we're not going to do it, or we need this information first before we decide, and then schedule whoever you have to schedule to come in and advise us.
The other one was the under 2025, the $15,000 for the new fiber line. That was either going to go away or be pushed out.
That's going to go away because we've been told we don't need that. Thank you. I missed that one.
Did Rob say that was, fiber was 40 years?
I thought he said that, yeah. That's what I remember, too.
So that fiber line is about, I remember, right, 2008?
It's been a long time.
I won't be on council then.
Neither. I won't be here either.
No.
That was the last one.
All right. We'll make those changes and adjustments.
And then in 2025, do you add an amount for the, whatever the assessment's going to be when you find that out?
For the what?
You would add in the cost of the assessment whenever you find that out for the Public Works Building.
Yes.
So the real nuance for me on the Public Works Building, it doesn't condensate in the summer, only in the winter. So I can have, I can get a price on an assessment. They just can't do it because it's not going to condensate in the summer.
But it wouldn't happen until next year, anyway. We're just, yep.
So...
So they'd do it in the summer of 2025?
Huh?
They would do it in the summer of 2025?
Yes.
Yes, which is what we're budgeting for. So that makes sense. Yep.
So I just want to clarify that, that, you know, I can't, I can't do anything with it till winter because, you know, it's cold outside and it's warm in the building. So then we end up with condensation, not today.
Okay. And then I think also whatever money you need to put in there to have somebody look at this place structurally, right? That's the other piece that's not in there right now.
It's in there now. It's listed as $5,000.
I think it'll be more than that, don't you?
I think we probably should bump that up.
Okay. Are we done with this?
Unless anybody has any more questions, that's all I have for this.
We ready to move on to our next topic? Mr. Mayor?
Sure. City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. One update and then an action item. The City of Forest Lake continues to work on their upgrade improvement for Eureka Avenue, which ties into our Hornsby Avenue street. And they're also doing some design work, some preliminary design work on our portion of the road as well. They're looking at applying... They're applying with the DNR because it's all under DNR property to get a permit to do this road improvement. They're saying that's probably going to be a year approval process. So they're looking at sometime in 2025, starting that project, but it's going to probably roll into 2026 before it's completely done. So they're also doing some of the environmental work on it, which also includes our portion of the project. And so what they're doing right now...
do the project on end of next summer or the next year, 2026.
Well, there's some different processes here. So this, this particular wetland replacement application goes to Rice Creek, but they're also submitting application to the DNR for their permit, for their, for their portion of the road project. So I'm told that's, could be up to a year review process on part of the DNR. So they're looking at sometime taking bids in, in '25 and getting it underway. And of course, we'd have to make some commitment whether we can move forward with our project. You know, I know Bill worked hard last year to get us some money, and I think we were on the list, weren't we? And then, and the list never got approved. So I'm assuming, what's the process there, Bill? Are we, will we continue to be on that list, or does that start all over again?
Mr. Mayor and Council, it starts over, but because the list was, you know, pretty far along and vetted, it's a good starting point. But it does start over, and the expectation is that there will be funding because it'll basically be two years since there's been any funding.
But would, would that be early on, do you think? Or was that going to carry out to the end of the session? Like, or nobody knows?
Nobody knows. Yeah. That, that's the right answer. Nobody knows. Especially in an election year.
So anyways, this is just a step in the process to, to apply for this wetland bank. And so just asking for authorization for the mayor to sign that application.
Any questions, anyone?
So we're actually asking, not we, they are asking Rice Creek for wetland credits. Might be better to have our name off that list. We haven't had a really good track record in that, in that regard.
Well, this is through a different, this is through the Bowser Bank, basically.
Okay.
And I would just, Mayor and Council, remind you of the statements that were made that even though it's not on the ledger, they would view a request favorably, so we might want to hold them to that.
Well, there you go. So do you need a motion?
Yeah, I think a motion would be appropriate.
So then I would move to authorize the engineer to proceed with, is it supporting?
We would need basically authorization for the mayor to sign the application.
Okay. Authorize the mayor to sign the application for LRIP money to do the environmental work, wetland credits.
It would be the, hold on, local government road wetland replacement program application.
That.
Is there a second?
Oh, Ron, I'll second it.
All right. Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
So, so Kevin, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We're on our way. It just probably will be two years.
What's that?
I said we're on our way.
Yeah.
It'll just be two years until...
Yeah, it would be probably 2026 before we'd have a completed project, assuming that we're, we're moving forward with funding on our part.
Well, and when do we have to sign on the dotted line that we're going to do this?
I'll need to get a little better schedule on that because I don't have that right now, so.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Kevin?
Nothing else.
Thank you. City, city attorney?
No formal report, but the engineers' questions remind me, this is the time of year that we tend to look into the legislative program, whether there's going to be one, what's included, what's not included. I certainly do agree that it would be easy to revive the fairly modest ask for that fix-up on Hornsby, and there may be other things that, that would be appropriate, but no, no need to decide tonight, just want to put that into your, your thinking.
Thank you. City council report, Ron?
Yes, I have something. I, Matthew Magstadt, the young man who worked on the Eagle Scout project, he did a great job, and according to Jim, he put in 15 oak trees, eight over here by us, and seven at Hidden Park. But anyway, I, the park board had asked, one of the, in fact, it was Brad started asking about if we were going to honor this young man for accomplishing it, and I thought that that'd be a great idea, and I was wondering if the city would consider making a plaque or dedicating a plaque near these trees or something, noting the year that he did this project, so that maybe oak trees, what, they grow 150 years? Maybe he can bring his grandkids over, but we at least know that somebody did a project and brought an asset, an accomplishment like that. And I think it's a great job he did, isn't it, Jim?
Yeah, he did a, did a really nice job.
And did he have help doing that, or did he do most of it?
He had help. I, I don't want to say how many people he had, but he had a crew of people that helped him.
And he dug all those holes?
Yep.
Wow, because those are good-sized trees.
They're very nice trees.
Wow.
It's a lot different than what I thought we were going to have. I thought they were going to be small trees, but when I seen that, I was impressed.
Yeah.
So that, nice job he did.
And I, I thought that we could, if we could agree to funding a plaque or whatever, if we could, you know, dedicate that to him, like at the Fall Fest, or at least note something there that this young man did this project and it improved our city, which is a plus-plus. But then Janet brought up, what, about four years ago, somebody with the...
The other Eagle Scout project that put a bench in the park near the playground that had, I think, honored the four different service areas, you know, Army, Navy, was it four or five?
Four.
Well, I thought, I thought he added like Coast Guard, too, but...
Coast Guard, Navy, Marines, Army?
Air Force.
Air Force.
I think there was five.
Five?
Yeah.
I haven't looked at it, I'm not, I don't know why I wasn't looking at it, I'm not sure. There's probably five on there.
So that, that also is a really nice bench. I've sat on it many times when I've been training the dog, and so we never really recognized that Eagle Scout either, and it might be good to do that with a plaque that says where it came from. So if we're going to, I think, I like the idea a lot, and I think that it, in other nonprofits that I've worked, and Eagle Scouts have done projects, they've always done something like that, and it also sort of encourages other Eagle Scouts to look at doing public service projects like that. So I think it's a, it's a nice way to say thank you, but it's also a nice way to encourage others to get involved.
Well, but we look at it in the long run. It's, it's just like, when was the tennis court put in? We all kind of scratch our heads and don't know, but it's like that bench in the park with, I forget his first name, Grubbs?
Phil Grubbs.
Yeah. I mean, it's got his plaque on it. I mean, even though you never get near that bench because it sits so far back, but it's nice to see a little history with a date on it, where this young man, Matthew, could come up, maybe, maybe he'll move in our, live in our city, and 40 years from now, he'll say, this is what I did.
Yeah. I like that idea.
So I was wondering if we could make a motion or do something?
That would be appropriate.
So, what, yeah, do you want to make the motion? It's your idea.
Well, I'd just like to make a motion that we, I don't know what the plaque would cost. Jack, do you know where we'd get something like that?
Now, there's several of these trophy places around that you can find those. Why don't we just come back and look, and you, if you want to do the other one, too, we can get the calls for two and just approve them at the next, we get that at the next meeting.
I like that idea, so I second it. Second that motion. So you're directing staff to look into getting a plaque for both of those.
Right, but would it be possible to get this kind of on the road before the Fall Fest?
So, you know, I vaguely remember us suggesting that he, like, be at Fall Fest to do education, and I thought their family were, had a vacation or something, but maybe, Jack, you could reach out to them, or Jim, or whoever was their contact person, and see if they're going to be around, because we could, we could do it at Fall Fest. And if not, we can do it at a council meeting after Fall Fest.
Or else we could make a, a board out there, you know, writing something that these, these young men did these accomplishments, you know, accomplishments in our city.
Mm-hmm.
I just think it's just the right timing.
Yep.
Good idea.
So...
Do we have a motion?
Well, we could, could we make the motion to have a dollar amount, like, not to exceed $100 or something? That way you could get it ordered. I don't even know if they were going to engrave something if they could get it in three weeks.
So I was thinking that if we just direct Jack to come back with an estimate of what it would cost, and to see whether or not they're available at Fall Fest, I kind, I remember that, I thought they weren't going to be around.
Actually, you asked, somebody asked the question.
Yep. So I think we should just forget Fall Fest and just say it would be at a future council meeting, and then we have a lot more flexibility to make it work with their schedule and to give you enough time to do the search.
Are we looking at something like to put on the bench and something to put by the trees?
I think putting it on the bench or in the concrete that the bench is sitting on, I mean, you, you probably have a better idea of where best place would be there.
I think we have to see what our options are for plaques and then try to figure out where.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you screw something to the tree, it won't kill it?
What, nail it to the tree?
Well, I wouldn't do that.
They can screws and...
Or what do you, how do you...
I don't know how you would do it unless you put it on the fence there, or you put it in the pavilion, noting that all the trees on the, on the south side of Kettle River Boulevard, those eight beautiful oaks were planted there in, in 2024 by this young man.
Or you put a little sign up, you know, above so that they're not having to weed-whip around it or whatever, but a sign near it that would say it. I don't know, you can see what's available.
Well, at least we got it going, whether, whenever we dedicate it or whatever, but I think it should be something that's permanent, that's, you know...
Mm-hmm. Good idea.
For years to come. That's all I have.
So we need to take a vote?
Oh, yeah, we have to.
Oh.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Can I just tag on to that really quick? So I also gave Ron a flyer that I found between my front door and my screen door, like, maybe a month ago, by him, too. So he, I don't know how much of the city he did this to, but he went around to describe the project, and then on the back, there was a frequently asked questions about oak wilt, which was part of what he was trying to do as education. I'd love to see him recognized on our website and have that on the website as well, and we talked about that with him, so maybe when you, when you call him, Jack, you could also ask him about that flyer and whether we can put that on our website and...
Want to pass that down to him?
Yep. I mean, I, I'm curious, like, did he go around every, every place, or how did he decide who gets one of those?
I didn't get one at all.
I didn't get one either. But I, you know, I wonder where he got the oak trees, too. Where'd he get the funding?
He fundraised. Yeah.
He fundraised for them, and he got the oak trees down south somewhere, I'm going to say, southeast somewhere. He had to drive a little ways to get them.
Well, they are beautiful trees, though. I, I thought they were going to have sticks, but you look at them, and they've got to be 10 years old or something to that, I don't know.
They're six feet tall.
Oh.
All right, Sue?
All right. Well, I, I'm going to do part of the personnel committee report. I think a couple weeks ago, I mentioned at our Forest Lake Cable Commission meeting that the Columbus representative, the city representative, has to resign his position. And he didn't give a lot of notice, so we put a posting up on the website for an applicant to come in and fill that vacancy. And we did have one person who responded and applied, and that is Jeff Durain. He's a current Columbus resident and former Columbus City Council member and former Forest Lake Cable Commission member. And he served on Forest Lake Cable Commission for 15 years, so he has the knowledge and experience to fill this position. He's willing to start right away, and it should be an easy transition. So he was the only one that applied, and so I make the recommendation to approval to appoint Jeff Durain to the Forest Lake Cable Commission effective September 2nd, which is next week, in order to assume commission responsibilities at the September 19th, 2024 commission meeting.
Is there a second?
I second, this is Janet. And he's replacing Mr. Wood, right?
Yes.
Just for the record, for the minutes.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jesse, aye. Anything else, Sue?
Nope.
Okay. I just wanted to give you a quick update on Fall Fest, so things are moving right along. Lynn has been out doing her fundraising and has been very successful. Excuse me, I think we have, or will have, six races sponsored out of eight. That's one more than we had last year, if everybody comes through who told her that she was, that they would do it. I think she has, I know she dropped off some, a check today from Viking, but I think at, when all is said and done, will probably be somewhere around $10,000 that she will have generated, and that would be in addition to the $3,000, and it could be more than that. There's, there's a few question marks out there. So she's done a great job with that. We had a volunteer committee meeting last week and got a lot of things decided, got some signs ordered, and we'll be asking our public works people to be putting those up for us when they come in, so that, so it's all coming together, and I think there's, there's going to be some new exhibitors. Our Minnesota Veterinary Neurology is going to be an exhibitor. They're going to do a demonstration showing a dog that gets, how they do neurological exams on, on dogs. And then she also sponsored a race, so Muddy Paws is going to be an exhibitor, Arpa is going to be an exhibitor. We've got the Master Gardeners coming in, we've got a lot of new exhibitors this year, so that'll be kind of fun. And then, of course, some new entertainment things and stuff for the kitties and the adults, too, and a craft vendor fair that will be in our city hall, so lots of new things. One of the things that, that Lori brought up to me this morning when we met was that on September 21st, which is the Saturday of Fall Fest, it is also the 18-year anniversary of Columbus becoming a city. So she wanted to know, should we do something at Fall Fest to commemorate that? And so the only idea that I had is, you know, it's kind of hard to, like, make an announcement because there's never really, like, one gathering place or a place where you can speak that everybody's going to hear it. So I was thinking we could do a big sign, like we did with, with the, commemorating the sponsors, like a Happy Birthday Columbus sign or something like that, because that's, that's...
With balloons.
Yeah. I mean, we have a balloon artist, he can probably come up with something, something fancy, but if you're okay with that, then I will have, we'll start working on designing that. And I was just thinking, it's like, Columbus is coming of age, we're legally, we're of legal age, finally.
Okay, that's a good one.
I had a refrigerator magnet forever in my office that had the date, so you might want to...
Yeah, there you go. So other than the Fall Fest stuff, I, I'll just do my, my personnel committee thing right now, too, is, and the only thing I was going to tell you is that we are very close to posting that Assistant City Administrator position. We have had a lot of, the only setbacks have been IT setbacks, trying to get permissions and licenses... So I was thinking we could do a big sign, like we did with the, with the commemorating the sponsors, like a Happy Birthday Columbus sign or something like that, because that's...
With balloons.
Yeah. I mean, we have a balloon artist. He can probably come up with something, something fancy. But if you're okay with that, then I will have, we'll start working on designing that. And I was just thinking, it's like Columbus is coming of age. We're legally, we're of legal age, finally.
Okay, that's a good one.
I had a refrigerator magnet forever in my office that had the date, so you might want to...
Yeah, there you go. So other than the Fall Fest stuff, I, I'll just do my Personnel Committee thing right now, too, is, and the only thing I was going to tell you is that we are very close to posting that Assistant City Administrator position. We have had a lot of, the only setbacks have been IT setbacks, trying to get permissions and licenses and all that kind of good stuff, and it never ends. So right now, the plan is that it will go live on all the places that we're going to put it, which is the League of Minnesota Cities, our own website, Indeed, and LinkedIn. And that will be on September 3rd, and we'll leave it posted till the 17th, and then we'll see. If we have a good pool, that'll be it, and if we don't, we'll put it up for another week or two. That's it.
Thank you.
Jim?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator?
Thank you, Jesse. When Elizabeth resigned, the city had a credit card, but the credit card had to be in her name, so that account was canceled and the card was shredded. We've been looking into getting what's called a community card. This would be a card which would not be associated with a personal guarantor and would be able to be used without having to attach someone's name to it. Cheryl's been working on that, and we're just asking for authorization to proceed with that, so we'll have a card to pay for things like the Indeed and LinkedIn accounts that we're working on now, the reservation for the bus that we're going to use for the commuter transportation for Fall Fest, some of these bigger things that, you know, we'd rather not ask staff to have to pay for and put on their credit cards and have reimbursements made. Somebody like Cheryl, we don't want her doing anything like that since she handles the money. City Council, same thing. We don't want any kind of things like that. This would go a long way to addressing those issues. So we're just asking authorization to get the new card to replace essentially an account which we had, which would eliminate the personal guarantor.
So there'll be multiple people that will have a card? When Cheryl and I talked about this. And then there's three people that you need that would be overseeing it? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about that? Because I think the question was, should one of them be a councilperson?
Right. So there needs to be three authorized individuals. One, I believe, would be myself. One would be Jack, and then one, we were thinking, should be a member on the council.
I was thinking it should be one of you check signers.
Or running out. Two people to the left of me won't be around.
So that should be handier for everyone?
Yes.
And easier for you?
Yes.
Writing reimbursement checks for $10 and whatever, whatever.
Well, and it came up because, you know, in order to get some of these, like, LinkedIn or whatever, I mean, we were like, oh, you have to write a check, and then you have to cut the check, and we have to approve the check, then we have to mail it in. By that time, you know, this person will be hired. So this is just...
And some places won't take checks. It's like reserving the bus, they wouldn't take a check. They had to have a credit card, so...
Yeah.
And this would be out of the U.S. Bank Branch in Forest Lake. So there's a lady that's been helping us, Allison. She's very nice, very kind. It seems to me this would be an easy credit card program to manage, so I think it's a great idea for us.
I could do it if you, if it's not...
I second that.
Yeah, I throughed that.
I mean, you're only talking something once a month.
And we would have statements, and then absolutely receipts would be required for every purchase. So, you know, just oversight of that process.
And then Cheryl will write a policy, so it's really clear what it can be used for and what kind of documentation you need to have. We both grew up with purchasing cards at the university, so we remember, we remember some of those rules, and I think there's some restrictions you can put on there and, like, the types of expenses, like, you can't go to a bar and charge a bunch of, no, so don't even get, just because you're unauthorized doesn't mean you get to do that.
Anything else, Jack?
That's all I have.
I think you were going to do a motion.
Yep, yes. So I would move to approve Cheryl moving forward with arranging for this organization purchasing card for the city.
I second.
Any other questions?
Would your motion include the designation of Ron?
Oh, yes. The designation of Ron and Jack and Cheryl as the authorized, what, representatives?
Yep. I resecond.
Resecond?
I reseconded it.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Thank you for doing that, Cheryl. Now that we're 18 years old, we can have a credit card.
Right.
Put that on the side.
There we go. Finally old enough to have a credit card and not even have a beer, though. Another few years before we can sit in the beer garden.
Yeah, there we go. Take your credit card to the beer garden and party. Letter E, announcement, sunrise, August 29th at 6:30 at East Bethel City Hall.
Do you want me to do the Planning Commission report?
Oh, yep.
All right, this will be quick. There's only one, one item for the Planning Commission at their meeting on the 21st, and that was a public hearing for MTW Truck Wash, a CUP which would be located on Hornsby Street, right across from the Loves. So the applicant was James and Brenda Ski, how do you pronounce her last name? Ski, Sky?
Sky.
Sky. And they live in Columbus on Broadway Street, and their idea is that they would build a industrials semi-truck wash. It could also be used for RVs, likely to operate somewhere around 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM initially, and then maybe 24 hours, depending on, on business. There was some, there was no public comments, no public opposition or anything that came up at the, at the open forum. The Planning Commission had some really good questions, and I'll just share some of those with you, because we'll be discussing this at our joint meeting next week. So one of them was related to the, the truckers who are pulling over in, in, at Loves because they're at the end of their number of hours that they can legally drive, and could they then still drive? Do they, there's some rule that says that once you're, you know, you're past your number of hours you can drive, and you have to take your 10-hour break, that you can only drive five miles an hour or less, I suppose, to park your, your truck or whatever. So his concern was if they're going from Loves to the truck wash, and they're going down Hornsby Street, and they're going at, like, four miles an hour, is that going to be a problem? And so James said that he thought that there was an exception to the rule for things like maintenance and stuff like that. So, I mean, hopefully they'll look into that and bring some clarity to the discussion. I think the other question, somebody asked whether or not they, they confirmed that there would be no truck or trailer overnight parking in this place. It's just come in, wash your truck, and, and go on again. It will have a grease trap and things like that. There was a lot of discussion about the amount of water that they will use. I'm sure you're interested in this because the draw is pretty large. They had not decided whether or not they would be recycling the water. Some of that had to do with Met Council requirements and things like that, so that's still an open topic. And then the last thing, which I think is, is a really important concern, is about a potential backup. So if you, I don't know, like, when we have applications for a drive-through, I remember this with Caribou, there was a stacking plan. So basically, in the design, you knew how many cars could stack on their property before it would spill out onto the, onto the road, to try to avoid the idea that there's going to be this big, long line of cars sitting on the road tying up traffic. So Robin had raised that concern about if you get a bunch of semi, 30-foot semis that are lining up on Hornsby Street to get into the car wash, that's a problem. So how many can actually line up on the property? And they hadn't actually, I think, figured that out yet. So I do think that that's one of the things that would be really helpful to require as part of the application, is to have a stacking plan, so that we don't have to worry about them hopefully spilling out onto Hornsby Street. So more on that, you guys will hear about this as, in more of the discussion, and hopefully some of these questions that got raised will have some answers by the meeting next week.
So are you saying that at the joint meeting next week, they're, are they going to finish the, or close the public hearing?
No, they closed the public hearing, so now this is their discussion.
Okay.
And then when they have their next Planning Commission, they'll make a recommendation to us.
Okay.
But it's, you know, their next, their next Planning Commission is the joint meeting, so that's when they're going to have their discussion.
Okay. And will we get the notes from that meeting in our packet for the joint meeting? The only reason I'm asking is because I wasn't able to attend that meeting, and that was a really great update, but maybe there's more information in there.
I'll see that you get the notes and/or also a copy of the recording, too, if you wish to listen to that.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to mention that in regards to that stacking question, their civil plan did, ended show, I'm just pulling it open now here, a stacking plan on it. Whether it's accurate or not, I guess they didn't check it that closely. They, they do have quite a space, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. They showed 10 trucks stacked on their driveway.
Okay. I think when, he, he didn't know the answer when it was asked during the public, you know, when the commissioner asked him the question, so...
Yeah.
I think it's, if that's what they have, and that seems adequate, then that would be good to know.
Yeah, I mean, that's the question. I don't know, is this supposed to be an automated car wash?
There's going to be, there's an automated, there's automated bays and then manual bays, so there's going to be both.
Okay. Because it must, I think they have two bays, right?
There must be one of each.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
All right. And the Planning Commission City Council meeting, September 4th at 6:00. City Council meeting, September 11th at 6:00. Anybody have anything else? Then our meeting's adjourned at 8:02.
We need a motion.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jesse, aye. Our meeting's adjourned at 8:02.